Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
Okay, we'll call the main order. Since we have National Night Out, we'll let Sheriff-elect Frazier go first.
All right. Sheriff's forming pass off concert for everybody. And then invite you guys to National Night Out tonight, 5 to 9. Frazier's at what, 6, I guess?
Frazier's at 6.
So, should be, should be fun night.
You'll have a great crowd. You'll have a large crowd, I'm sure. A popular, popular event.
Yep. Unless you guys have a question for me?
We have a, I'll just give you a chance to talk about it. We'll deal with it shortly, but you have an additional from firearms training fund, and my understanding that's to buy bulletproof vests and maybe shotguns. Is that correct?
I know about the vests. We got a grant for, we get a federal grant for a large portion, or half of that cost. And then our vests are up. It's been almost five years. It's every five years you have to replace them, so. And they definitely need shotguns. We've been talking about it for a while. They've been there since I've been there.
I believe the sheriff had mentioned that, that that was another part of this appropriation. This is a big chunk of this, for those of you obviously remember. Normally, there's not that much money in this fund, but from their firearms auctions last year, brought in quite a bit of money. And as Sheriff-elect stated, they get a grant for about half of the bulletproof vest replacement and stuff, so.
So each deputy will carry a shotgun in with him and the...
Yeah, we carry our shotguns now. It's just they're, they're 20 plus.
Time to replace them.
They're over 20 years. I've been there 21 years and they were there for me, so.
Probably time.
Twenty-five years or so, yeah.
Probably time, yeah, no doubt.
Definitely.
No doubt. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we may go see you tonight.
All right, I'll be there.
Okay, department head comments. Katie?
Good morning. Start out, I've got a few things, so sorry to take your time, but...
No problem.
First off, I'll just give you an update on my department. We have about the same number of appeals. We were down quite a bit the last time I talked to you. We've got the same number of appeals. We had our first dark box. If you've heard about that, it's been on the news. CBS, I have already spoken to them. They are withdrawing their appeal. So, but we're doing well. We've already had our first set of informal appeal hearings and everything's going well. We're in the middle of reassessment. We have done Howard, Green, and we are now in Liberty. And that's about that. I do have something that got brought, I was scheduled for vacation today, but my staff contacted me and they were concerned because one of my staff members gets her paycheck a day early and she was double paying. And she wanted to know how this is, how did it happen? How's it going to be rectified? And what are we going to do about that? And I have a follow-up after that.
What do you know about the double pays?
The, there is no double pay. The auditors office, the auditors office has sent out one payroll to the bank. There's a bank problem. The bank is in the research. We've already contacted the bank this morning. The bank is in the research of finding out why they picked up two deposits and sent two deposits out. We checked our, I checked all the transaction histories. I went in and checked all the check registers. There's only one payroll that went in to the bank. There's only one payroll showing up in the HARA system, but for some reason, the bank has picked up two deposits. And Michelle has the deposit thing here to show that we've only got one, that we've only submitted one deposit. But somehow, the bank has picked up a deposit twice. So it's on the bank this year. I'm waiting here from the bank to see what the bank's going to do about it.
So let me ask a question just first, so that I understand if I ask anything about, anymore about this. You say that you have sent, maybe I may get some of these terms wrong, sent one, sent one through, but they've picked up two? How to explain that to me? Because what I see in this, on this hand, is 127,000 and change. And on this one, I see a negative 200, almost 255,000, which would be about double.
That one deposit is doubled to what they've got pending out there.
Okay, so how does a bank pull more than what it is told to?
Well, let me interject, please. I just got a text from my deputy. The bank says it did come through twice.
That is correct. There's a bank error at First Financial Bank.
Surely not. How you really feel about it?
Because she called her, her bank, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
Right, and that's what I look like on it, that is. But as far as in First Financial's system, our ACH was sent to the bank one time. I can go in and look and see that the ACH was sent one time. If you go in and look at their withdrawal, it's exactly twice the amount. And it is a banking error. And that happens all the time. I worked at a bank for six years.
I mean, and she's asked me to find out, and that's my due diligence for my employee, is to find out what happened.
When I searched, when I searched the HARA system, there's only one payroll in the HARA system. There is not two payrolls. Just one payroll in the HARA system. And the bank's supposed to call me after 10 o'clock this morning. They're probably calling me from Arizona to let me know what's going on.
Okay, then Laura, how do we fix this for Gala? Will the bank?
The bank will have to fix it.
Okay, they'll negative her account, I'm assuming?
It's out of, it's out of our control.
Right, I understand. I didn't know. You said you talked to banks, so I didn't know what the discussion was.
But no, there's the processing center, which is out there in Arizona. That's where it was last time. I was at the courthouse like at 7:30, 8 o'clock, one night, one evening last month. And the bank had called and were into verifying some stuff, and I was kind of leery about it. So I called First Financial next day. She says, yes, then they're not there in Arizona. They're on different time zone than we are, and that's where their processing center is. One of the processing centers. So it's out of the auditors' control, and it's up to the bank to get that fixed.
Nothing is actually hard posted in the accounts yet anyways. They're supposed to take full track until tomorrow. They have time to rectify it.
All right, so you'll be able to, should have, hopefully have maybe an answer sometime later today of why this happened? Okay, and you can make sure the department heads.
To the department head or something, because they're going to be asked, so. Send out an email, you know, that either it's been rectified or what the solution was. Anything else, Katie?
No, Tim.
Tim?
Okay, everything in my office is running smoothly. We're working on tax sale now. The main reason I came here today is I would like to know why the deputy payroll is only working two days a week? And are they making full pay while they just do the two days a week? And so that my girls can do that too, as long as I'm there with the office open?
As far as I know, it's a full-time job, so I would assume that he should be there full-time. Is he not there full-time?
He's there, he's, I gave him a couple of days off last few weeks. He's there Monday, Tuesday, and Friday. And I gave him some time off without pay.
So is he entitled to vacation and that sort of thing already? Are these vacation days, or are these, what days are these?
Unpaid days.
Just unpaid days?
Yeah, because he's already burned his vacation days.
So I guess we really don't need a full-time person in payroll, then we could get by with a half?
He's full-time.
No, I'm saying we're going to do budget here in a little bit. Here next month, maybe we only need a half-time payroll person then. Is that what you're telling me?
That's up to you, but I would suggest full-time.
Well, then it sounds like he ought to be there then.
Yes.
It's a full-time job. If he doesn't have days, he needs to be there. This is not him and go as you please. This is not go to the ritz and get popcorn whenever we want to. These are full-time jobs. We have rules for that.
He's got other priorities.
And Janice has said it's left officials to run their offices, they want.
Well, this, they're still full-time jobs, and if he's not there, why, it's a full-time job.
Because if his priorities lie elsewhere, then he needs to focus on those priorities and let somebody else do the job.
So, I mean, if you, you know, it's very bad to be allowed that. And yes, maybe you can go so far with that, but then we're going to step in and say, hey, this can't, this is not right. Obviously, they're concerned about this. These are full-time jobs. They need to be there. Anything else, Kim?
No, that's it.
Henry?
I have a mass exit happening.
Pardon me?
A mass exit of employees.
Okay.
I have one leaving the 22nd, one leaving the 29th, possibly a third. Because they're unsure of their future, they've had better job opportunities, so. I'm going to be struggling to keep the office running right. Hopefully, I can get some people hired. They're probably, that's probably going to be almost impossible, not knowing whether they'll have a job in January.
Well, the rules are that really the new office holder can only change the first deputy. Those other people, they'll have to have cause to be changed, to just not come in and, or not under a system where you can just eliminate people's position without cause. So that doesn't help much, obviously, when they come in, but that is, those are the rules. The first deputy is considered management, so that changes as the office holder changes. But the other people are county employees and should be unaffected by that, as long as they...
Do their job.
Show up and do their job.
So I just wanted to give you guys a...
Well, I try to work with that the best I can, I guess. Mary Ann, auditor-elect?
There's still a few problems with payroll withholding. Stuff's not getting paid. I told Josh about it. He says I'm working on it, but it's been a while. Like, there's three pay periods in March and April that the state withholding is still setting in the withholding bank account. It hasn't been paid to the state. And some of the retirements, like Perp, it's not right, but I don't have the paperwork to prove what's not right.
Mm-hmm, but it's not just paid now?
I've got money left in the account that's not been paid to Perp. The same with, there's like one sheriff's comp that's not been paid. And he finally got Nationwide paid. It used to be called Empower, Empower. He finally got it paid, but he didn't get it all paid. And since I don't have all the paperwork, I just know what's hit the, hit the withholding bank accounts and what was sent out.
Right, because the, shouldn't they, in the end, shouldn't they pretty much be zero? Because it comes in, they're like, they're a pass-through type deal, right? And then it will go back, then it's paid out to whatever, right? Is that how that works?
Yeah.
But then there's still money in there, then it tells you there's a problem. Is that correct?
Federal, state, and Perp, I call Perp, it's all the retirement, all have balances in them and they should.
I will have that cleaned up for party.
Did you get a solution for the jailer who was reaching out about the Perp issue that she had through the jails? So you gotten that result?
Okay, anything else from, from you?
No.
Go ahead. No? I can't hardly see you because of the potter.
Cindy's left.
Oh, Cindy? Sorry.
I'll just update you on a couple non-redevelopment commission things that our organization's been working on. So we've been doing an early care and education strategic plan that is now complete. If anybody's interested in seeing that, I'd be more than happy to share that with you. You're probably going to start hearing a lot more about that. Part of that plan is trying to put in position a coordinator to help coordinate all the efforts in looking at childcare across Park County, as well as equality from an education standpoint in the like preschool-type age. So we're working very closely with the schools and the foundation, perhaps as an opportunity to fund that position. Just wanted to make you aware of that. It's not something we're coming to the county for. We're working through other sources to perhaps do that. The second thing is the housing needs assessment, which should be closing here really quickly. We've got, for you, doing some data crunch on the surveys that were done. And so we'll be able to share that report here shortly as well, so.
Any questions, Cindy? Okay, thank you.
I do have something else. This is more of a public comment. My mother had to be taken by ambulance to the hospital Thursday night. And I know you get told, but they don't hear it often enough. We have a top-notch ambulance service. Quality employee. She had a major issue, and then we had two EMTs on the ambulance. We stopped and picked up a paramedic. Excellent. And I texted Julie to let her know. I want her to know how much I appreciate the staff and how hard she works to keep the people of Park County safe.
You get what I'm saying? All right, public comments?
Well, you may not, what about the auditory?
Yeah.
So I'm going to need the treasurer's office to cash in a CD for the rainy day fund, because we are short in rainy day fund. We don't even have enough money cash in that fund to even do the budget for this next year. Right now, I am short 12,434.76. I do have claims coming out here for July. I don't have that amount total yet. We don't even have enough for the budget here to have any money put in.
Well, the next year's budget is irrelevant at this point, so we'll deal with what you have now, and we'll let you know what we're going to do next year.
Okay, so the treasurer doesn't cash in a CD.
Can you let them know this, or is this the first time you told them?
This is the first time.
Okay, well, I'm sure they will be happy to do that.
And then the other problem is when we went to do the payroll to receive back for 2019, the salary resolution does not total up correctly. The grand total on that is wrong, so we might want to take a look at that.
Okay. What do you mean, the grand total from?
Well, what to go balance it out after we put it into payroll and after we did the receiving, your grand total at the bottom of the resolution does not kind, does not add up correctly. Because when we balance it back, your grand total.
Okay, we'll look into that. Anything else?
Are those happening today on this pay period?
Yes, they've already happened.
All right, have we gotten the paybacks from the two elected officials that are no longer part of the county government?
I'm waiting on one more.
You haven't gotten one, not the other one, yet?
Correct. I will reach out to her again.
I will report back to you on the total, and we'll look into the rainy day fund, whether we do an inter-fund loan or cash in a CD.
Yeah, let us look at that before, let us look at that before you do anything.
I didn't hear you.
I didn't realize you were going to do an inter-fund.
Well, good. Well, good.
That's not going to solve the problem.
We may not want to solve the problem.
Because there's not enough cash.
Well, if you cash it, let's say, let's just say for the sake of argument that there's a CD comes due in November. Then we can inter-fund loaned until it's due.
Take the penalty. We have to take penalty, don't we, if a guy's getting in?
Let's look at that first, just to make sure, okay?
Don't need to take the penalty if we have to.
So look into when they're due, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right, now we'll go to public comments. Do you have something to comment, or?
No, sir, I'm just observing.
Okay, did you sign in? Okay, okay. All right, we're ready for approval of the minutes by our meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from May and June, maybe May 12th and June 9th.
I'll second. Most have been made in seconds to approve the minutes. All in favor? Additional appropriations?
Two, we spoke with the, with Mr. Frazier about the firearms training one, so you've heard that one. The CASA one is a grant that they had received and asked for that to be appropriated. The director was coming today to talk about this, but something come up in for May, and then obviously, we share the CASA program between both counties, so she needed to go over there, and I told her that would be fine. And this is new revenue that they have asked to be appropriated. Do those?
Second. Most have been made in seconds to approve. The additional is all in favor?
Aye.
Transfers?
Transfers. This is the first part of a fix for the highway department. Randy came to me a couple of weeks ago. As you know, they, the highway department received to the tune of almost $800,000 in the community crossings matching grant fund for round one of this year. They, so those projects will be done in calendar year 2022. They also received the grant in the second round of '21. Those projects are already been completed for this year. So you end up with a scenario here where you have two grant cycles happening in the same calendar year. So the round two projects were actually done in '22. The round one of '22 will be done in '22, so you have two sets of match required. We only basically appropriate enough, you might say. I mean, we don't necessarily appropriate the match, but we put money into their, into their lines that they request that accommodates that match. But they don't have enough match in there for both sets of projects. Couple that with when they went out for bid, or went out for the grant and had bids to work with at that point, pricing has gone up. The total shortfall is in about $440,000. 200 or so of that is inflation. You'll call it inflation, whatever you'll call it. The balance is the second round of grants in the same calendar year. So Randy came and said, well, I've got two options. Number one, either give the grant back, which I don't think is an option, or number two, find the money. So what we decided is this, first of all, is this transfer in lit-ebit in front of us, $99,000 from Courthouse Professional Services to buy two minutes' materials. The Courthouse Professional Services line is unused. It's budgeted every year. It's part of the old CDIT rules that we continue to utilize that required that certain amount be budgeted in the revenue, and now we exceed that, but we still have it there. And the balance is going to be submitted as an additional appropriation for our consideration in August from local road and streets. He has sufficient money in here to cover that without taking anything else out of the MDH funds or CDIT. So the balance, whatever that, $341,000 roughly, will be done as an additional in August, so that they can proceed, accept the grant, have awarded the bids, to the best of my understanding, and we'll proceed on down that path. So that's why that transfer's there, along the answer to them.
The last thing we want to do, send the grant back. Or find the money, no matter what, you know, even we have to do. Just so you know what the number is. It used to be about 100,000 a mile on a grant thing. Now it's 173,000 a mile. So instead of getting 10 miles, we get 5.7 miles out of a million. It's 173,000 to black top a mile now. Like you said, it was always around a hundred. Always around 173, it's done. Why are we talking about going up?
So, there you are.
Okay, well, we need to do that, because we're gonna...
I will send grid back.
No, we're not sending the grant back. No way, no way.
May I ask a question just related to that? So going forward, are we okay with doing two grant requests per year?
Absolutely.
We'll find, we'll find it.
Yeah, the answer has always been, when we've been asked about that, is go get every one of them you possibly can. We will find them out. We have turned them in the past, not recently, but in the past, have submitted a smaller amount for grant because we did not have enough match in the budget. We keep a reserve for these things. We will find the money somewhere, somehow. This was the least painful way to do it this time. The next time, it may be a different one.
Just wanted to make sure, so we're getting ready for the next round?
Go get it.
All right, get, yeah.
Get all you can, any way you can.
We'll make it work. So we need that, we need a transfer for that.
Move the transfer.
Most have been made in seconds to approve. The transfers all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no reappropriation. Pay the jury.
Motion to pay the jury.
Second. Most have been made in seconds to pay the jury. All in favor? Reduction in funds, redevelopment?
We did meet, we considered a revolving loan application for taxi derby service out near the lake on 36, the other side of the lake. We did choose to award $15,000 for the revolving loan fund. We also, a day or two or so before that, were notified that we had received, or had been awarded $100,000 into the revolving loan fund from a USDA grant that Cindy has multiple times applied for, and was successful this time, so the live another. $100,000 there available to be loaned out for worthy applicants.
Does the repayment look pretty good?
No, we've got four that are having problems with right now, two that are in some sort of, if you call it litigation, yes, or not, but we're...
Pursuing, man.
Pursuing them, we're pursuing them. The other two are late at this point. One of those is in more of a pursuit process as well, where we've gotten half of that pair that's repaid their part. And then the fourth one is short only by a couple of months at this point. The rest of them have been paid on time.
None of the whole is working.
It works, it works. This is a loan to last resort, because they can't go to, they've already been to the bank and can't get a loan, so. And we try to, you know...
Screen as best we can.
Screen them as best we can. The good thing is that, you know, we, I think we've done pretty well, and maybe we're getting better at screening them. Do you think, Cindy? I mean, we try to, we asked a lot of questions, and... But it's a small, most of them are small startup businesses, and...
Risky.
They're risky, and...
But that's also the point.
Yeah, it's a part of the book.
I can say over, probably over the last 10 years, we took that original $100,000 and have done 28 loans now, and we've probably, in total, loaned out close to $400,000 and maybe able to, you know, revolve that money. So we've helped a lot of folks get started and some continue. And then we have separate loans... So we, we've helped a lot of folks get started and some continue, and then we have separate loan hours related to COVID that we've done as business loans as well to keep people employed, so.
In my time, really, I can only recall two that we have completely given up on in eight, in almost eight years now. So out of that twenty-eight, and you're down to twenty-six, we're fighting, we're working on three, so you're down to, what is that, twenty-three? That's a pretty good success, very frankly, for very risky propositions.
Maybe a little of the last, the last resort.
It is.
But that's okay.
Yep, okay, my name is Tony.
We met, uh, got a petition for change of zoning on Catlin Road, and it was moved on at V Z A, and they did not have a. Yeah, they had quorum, but they, they tabled, they need some more information, and we need some appointments on. We got people that haven't shown up in two years.
Now, we need, we, we take the inventory by the end of the year, but if you have any questions, you need to fix now, let us know. Do you have recommendations for who the fellows with, well, we're open to those as well? That's state statute now, it's a requirement of, uh, attendance.
Uh, we've got some, now we've got one that went in two years.
Four.
Yeah, so, anyway. But, uh, that's a, so I think they're getting further information on that, we'll see how it goes.
If you have recommendations, you send us, if you don't, we'll, we'll look to find you.
We've got a couple of months.
Okay, uh, courthouse security did not meet, solid waste?
Uh, we don't meet until the twenty-seventh of this month.
See, solid waste, ask for another rate.
Yeah.
I thought we sat in here last year with her and said that we would go along with last year's, but you don't have to hold off. Is that not how that went down?
It was how that went down.
That's what I remember, but all of a sudden we get it submitted as another quarter raised.
I remember that conversation, I was in the last meeting where that was discussed.
Are you sure my memory was right?
Yeah, I'd like, appreciate you confirming that, if I told me that too, you know, we will, we'll deal with that. Uh, new business, do you have, I'm sure you have a few things. One thing I'm gonna say is the budget hearings are August eighteenth, nineteenth if we need it, and they will be in here. This way we don't disrupt the auditor's, uh, office and all of that, so the hearings will be in here. Uh, what's the title on that, Roy?
Eight-thirty, I believe, is right.
Eight-thirty, oh, it's eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, okay.
And the Departmenthead should have their schedule, I believe he sent, and he sent back and forth for us to check it, and I believe it's been out.
Okay, so, uh, but, but we'll be here, be the same process as always, we might be able to get it done in one day. So the nineteenth is a maybe at this point. Do you have anything else?
Uh, regarding the budget, uh, no, not a lot at this point. The Department of Local Government Finance is taking their sweet time, but no, whatever they're supposed to put out. Normally, things that would've been out last day or two of June, or the first day or two of July is still not. So that's a little amount of progress, um, all requests are, are in, received, and a lot of revenue stuff's done, but we've got a little ways to go before I'm really prepared to say much about it. So. Um, I do have a question outside of that. When, we, we just did that CASA additional, uh, when is the CASA money gonna be paid from the circuit court?
Um, I can have it paid.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get that done. I noticed when I was working on the budget and their fund balance didn't seem quite right, and that hadn't been done, so if you could go ahead and pay that over to them, have a beef, please. And has anybody gotten with the attorney about, uh, the former maintenance person's?
Yes, we, I have sent him all the, the employee's new address, and Nick has all that information, and he's working on it.
Okay.
Anything else? Ace, do you have anything, you missed, you missed my, the public comments.
I know, I know.
I'm sure you were.
Been a busy morning.
I'm sure you've had a busy morning, would you like to share anything?
Yeah, I got, just, just a few things, your, uh, the, uh, core facilities match that event with us last meeting. He's having difficulty getting bids, the way we structured his request for bids, um, was, uh, using New Core, um, property damage, use New Core site for that, and, uh, you have to be registered with New Core to be able to use that, use that stuff. He has sent, uh, requests all over the state, got zero bids on the, on the site, on the jail, but he's met with New Core people, and they're gonna restructure, they're gonna, they're gonna send out to anybody, to all the contractors, that anybody interested or looking to bid, they will make them a, a, on their list so they can use the material, so. He's gonna send those out again, change, pack, so, we still haven't heard from that yet, but we will, I think. On that, this, uh, all the, uh, instructions, remember, everybody who's mad that says a sighting has to come off, that, that old, uh, that old.
The stucco stuff needs to come off, well, I think that's the best way to go.
They said nobody would've more to eat, they got that under the school.
Start coming off.
So it's gonna have to come off. Um, projects are going on at the jail and courthouse now, so we are moving down that path. It's my understanding, you, you may know, it's my understanding, the purple property has been sold and, and the project is being cleaned up, yeah. I think, who's, who's Mark bought it, I think, he's a process using his stuff to clean it up, so that's, uh, that's a good thing.
Did you guys waive the, the fines on that, or will you?
I talked to, I talked to the judge about that, of course, you couldn't talk about this one, but I said, in this type of, in this type of a case, can we? And he can answer that, and he said, yeah, it's, it's easy, easily done, it's gotta be requested by the county attorney, and so it has been, so that's in the process. That'd be part of the selling price, but he had like thirty thousand dollars worth of fines coming in, so if they could, right goes off, then he could get it sold for thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm, I'm full support there, if we get it cleaned up, that's the way to go.
You guys been on, been a bit of a struggle on that.
It's still in the taxi.
I don't know about that, don't know.
Well, it is.
Yeah, don't know?
And I asked anybody if they seen anything about it being sold or anything, and they said no, so it's in there.
Gayla, Gayla told me while I was off that it came through our office.
When?
Uh, I'm gonna say Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, well, this was twenty-two, two weeks ago.
I think it's all out there, I, and I understand this Jim, this Mark bought it, so you may be hearing from him, I don't know how that all works, I don't know how you make it, what you do, so.
But we don't want it in, if at all possible, we don't, you know, if he's bought it, we don't want it in the taxi. We all can look into that and try to figure it out, please.
Don't put any bumps in that road.
Yeah, because we don't want that, uh.
We have a issue come up that you may hear about, so I just want you to know what it is, it's fixed, I think, or at least in the process of being fixed. Uh, the ATV race out at, uh, Leon and Brian Property, the old Leon and Brian Property, um, we were asked again this year if we would close over thirty-six, which we've done in the past, and the neighbors that we've always talked to, except for one, is fine with that, we had to make some clearances, they weren't turning around in, in one property's yard when they finally couldn't get through, but they were supposed to be set up to five hundred, so they couldn't even start down.
And they have been, I've seen them sitting out there, where they would stop them and say, you know, you can't go there, I've seen them sit down there.
So that's been fixed, I think the issue, though, it came up, uh, and Dan went out, and Dan talked to Greg Larson, and Greg's gonna fix that, he didn't think it would be a problem. They are running their race under thirty-six, through, under the bridge, on thirty-six.
Oh, under the creek, under the.
Under the highway, on the bridge, and then they're running through our culvert, uh, to get up to the other side, to get to the double silo barn. We were never asked about that, and that, that's, uh, that culvert's certainly not made to have an ATV rear racing, it's molded metal, metal, uh, culvert.
Well, it's not that high, I wouldn't think it'd be very high either.
But they're running it, so we didn't want the liability, so Dan went out to talk to him, and he came down, he just didn't think it'd be a problem. The biggest problem is gonna happen, not so much us, we can stop the art part pretty quickly, but the high, uh, the D N R would not be happy at all about those ATVs going through that creek and up the bank, they would not be happy with that at all.
Because I'm aware of some of the ridden ATVs up on a real dry, not that same creek, but farther north of the covered bridge, and the conservation officer comes and, and is gonna offer, are gonna give you a citation for doing that.
Yeah, they give them my place, I had my neighbors from trespassing, I wouldn't care about that so much, but they were running back to my place, and they were tearing up the bank and the creek, and they came to me and said, well, we got some options we can do today, we can confiscate all their three widows, if you know who they are, I said, well, you follow the track, see where they come from. And, uh, he said they would have to completely restore the bank to what it was before, and the creek to what it was before, which would be thousands of dollars. And I said, no, I don't, I don't, I don't want that, I don't want stopped, but I don't want that, so, they're, they're pretty serious, so I'm, I'm surprised they haven't heard from the D N R yet on that, so. He said they would change the path, they won't do that anymore, so that should be taken care of, but if you get a call about it, that's what it's about, and it should be taken care of.
That's part, yeah.
I, I got a call last night, said they were concerned about the bank on, on our, on, said they'll, they'll destroy it.
Oh, absolutely will.
And then it's gonna worsen, they were really concerned, because it was right there at the bridge.
I'm sure the state would not have given them permission to drive under the bridge on, in the creek, uh, so anything, but, but Greg's a good guy, so I'm not upset about it, he just didn't think that'd be a problem, but obviously he is.
They were concerned if, if they come up, uh, off a raccoon and come up the little branch, they went up there anyways, close to that bridge of ours.
Yeah.
Said it, you'll lose the abundance, because it will worsen.
I would agree with that, yeah.
So they're gonna get that.
Yeah, so it's stopped, but that's.
Because I told the person I'd get back from them, yeah, said we got, worked hard enough to get that bridge to work.
Dan met with Greg, and Greg was unaware that it would even be an issue, is why they didn't ask him about it, but he said he could change the, the course, that, so, that's a non-problem. And, that's all I got, don't know, August nineteenth, uh, I got notice from Laura that the, um, audit enters interviews the nineteenth, so we're starting down the audit, audit.
So nineteen, next, next, nine-thirty, next.
Nine AM next Tuesday.
Oh, nine AM, yeah, okay.
In the jury room.
In the jury room, okay, well, either, either I'll be there or my designated will.
Give me the number of that truck for now.
Anything else?
Nope, I'll be.
I'm gonna have trouble getting that bus over to Topman.
Uh, the extension, I guess, were short Gail, or what?
Gail Wright took another job down at Big O, I think, and we've been short, they did hire a program assistant forty hours a week till, I think, the first of, what, September? That the Purdue's paying for, that we're not paying for that, or.
But we've got, on our, that third position, Gil's was, was our funding, so.
Yeah.
We need to make an adjustment there, we didn't have anybody for what, two months?
Not so far, but we've already probably paid, we've already paid for the.
Yeah, the contract's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have to address that.
Pay those three contracts, uh, there's fifty dollars left over out of them.
Right, well, it's been paid.
And I'm not sure what went wrong with that.
I can't say on the.
Fifty dollars out of each, uh, so it'd be a total hundred fifty.
We'll get them adjusted next year on, for sure.
Put in what they put in their budget report and.
Whatever they pay in to be paid, that's what we don't pay out, it comes to match what it's supposed to be.
Who the hell knows? I can't say on the, uh, solid waste stuff, and Montgomery County went out on, on their own, we always have that option, I, I don't think it would be, like, cost savings for us to do that, but if you want commissioners to look into that, to see if we hire someone to do our own, because it's gonna be constantly going up, it's just makes right now the way it's gonna be, so. Um, we obviously have to have that recycling out there, otherwise half that stuff would end up in our ditches someplace.
And it is used, there, there's never been an argument that it's not used, it's just, uh.
If you get where you want us to look into that, we can, but I just, I, I talked to John Frye up at, uh, Montgomery County, and I just don't see it being, we're not big enough, I just don't see it being, uh.
Of course, a lot of those, correct me if I'm wrong, those larger counties generally have a landfill, and so then they collect tipping fees from that landfill to pay for their solid waste, I think that's how that works.
Montgomery County, yeah, one needs to have.
That's not right, that's not.
No, I, I think it does, I think you're right, it does happen in a lot of those counties, Montgomery's not one of them, it just happens to not be one of them.
Oh, okay.
They don't have, they don't have land.
Now, Fountain County did have, did they lose theirs over the mistop, it was right there off of, uh, forty-one, did that close down?
I don't think it's running anymore, but I'm not sure.
I don't see anything going out of there, so I don't think.
Does Hill Morgan run there, it's north of King eternal?
I don't think that's.
I think it's.
There's a big fight about that, I used to see all the signs about.
Matter of fact, did it actually even ever open?
No, they stopped it.
That's what I thought, I don't think that it ever got open.
No, big, big push about.
Big time, big time, uh, my, I, I'm not sitting here saying that you need to go find a way to do it, I, I just, I asked the question that I asked because we said in this room a year ago, when we, you know, and, because that paper came last, that time with five years' worth of increases. Now, I remind you that at that point, they had eight or nine hundred thousand dollars in reserve.
Yeah.
Again, that was the, that was the question, right, so when we, when she came, when Jane came, and, and she did, she answered every question that we asked beforehand and came and answered them all here too. It was left at, we'll go along with this one, you guys had signed the paper, we were fine, we would go along with it, but not going forward until it's brought before us.
We haven't seen the new members of that, uh.
No, we got it, I mean, they've sent up, uh, it's got.
Is that their plus down, uh?
Oh, you mean as far as their financials, no, I have not seen.
Yeah, I don't see that either.
Did you ask for that, the finding, or ask her for that, tell her we'll need her budget, because I'm sure we will decide if we see them pay.
They're banking that kind of money, I don't.
Well, they were, that was whole idea, we were gonna stop paying until they spent that down.
Yeah, and that, and I, and that's our complaint, you know, they're not supposed to be running a bank, there, I understand they need some reserve, and that's.
Absolutely, and we understand the cost goes up.
And I understand costs go up, but they don't need to have that kind of bank.
What I don't understand is the highway stuff we talked about, that's a seventy-three percent increase over last year.
That's a lot.
Seventy-three percent, hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Material fuel, it's oil-based product.
And it's the only game down, you got nobody else to go through, Milestone is it?
Yeah.
They, nobody else bids, and we take bids, but they're down.
There is nobody else, no, we, we are, are still doing some of our own, some of our own.
Right.
Who's, who's Plutonum using now, do you know?
No, I don't.
They were using somebody other than them at least a few years ago. You might, it might be worth a call over to one of their commissioners and asking, I don't remember the name, Dave Barry told me. I cannot remember the name of that outfit, um, they were happy with them, um, I do know one road they did, it's north out of Rogetale to Hall Creek. Well done, I think it's hundreds of centimes a day, um, that they did on that, that outfit did, um, it might give you another option, that's all I'm saying.
Well, look.
I'm not saying they're better or worse than Milestone at all, but it might give you the better.
It does seem like from the roads that I've been on, that we blacked up, they're nice.
They are, they do a good job, they do.
We are, we can do.
I hear nothing but good things now about, uh.
I wish we could do a lot more, I, well, we didn't, we, you all, or we, or whoever, did the right thing by going to the hot mix and. Because they're, they last so much longer, and we don't have to go back and, and they're smooth.
Are they chipping seal there, what, there under, where it is?
They are good at chipping seal, I'm not sure where they are, but they are chipping.
They're down front of Jack's Hyotas, they're chipping, they blacked up last year and chipped seal this year.
Grant, I, Grant and I've had that discussion about, we have to, we've always been, you know, I don't want to waste your time, but we've always been in a position of trying to rescue roads after they fall apart so bad, because we didn't have the funds to, to maintain what we had, we need to concentrate more on maintenance and preserve what the new ones we get to make sure we don't lose the, they don't get away from us. We've had some breakup already, but very few, four hundred, I think, was, is it four hundred, gotten beaten up pretty bad, so some things to look at.
Which one?
North of my house.
Oh, no.
That's a, very good, and what it is, it's typical, it's, it's cut out from, it's cut out from horses.
If you go up north at all, and some, I talked to Grant two weeks, had to think about that, first time I was up there, after they had done that, uh, I can't remember what county it is, it's up in Topeka, India, and it's an Amish area up there that I had to take my maple syrup supplies up, uh, and, you know, treat, weld it, and, uh, they've got these shrifts on the side of the county roads, and I was like, what the heck are these? And that's where they've had to cut out sections and put concrete in, and pay over that to preserve those paths for the, for the Amish horses, so we may.
Now, the, now the next road over, Judson Road, is a milestone hill, and that's, that's not happening yet.
Good, good.
Not yet.
Is that the difference between the hot mix versus the cold?
Well, seems to be, I mean, there's a one-year difference in them.
Could be, then go now.
Four hundred was paid one year, and the next year was.
We paid four hundred, didn't we?
We did, yeah, it was one of our last year doing our own, paid the jobs on that.
And I know they look nice for a while, but I just don't think our, our jobs hold up near as well, I don't think we have.
Well, they, you don't have a professional there from the day you.
Right, and what I'm, I'm really impressed by when they do, and you can see it every place, when you go into a corner, instead of maintaining that two-inch, twenty-foot layer, a hundred and seventy-three thousand bucks a mile, they'll, they'll fill it up enough, that's a level going around the corners, or maybe a little bit banks, the water comes off, but, but there, there's some place, they got six inches of blacktop in their asphalt, and they were, in the past, they've not done that, they just only had it here, you get, you get a truck that comes off the edge and breaks off the edge, not every truck that comes by breaks more of that edge off all the way down the route. So I'm, I'm impressed with how they do it, I think they're doing well.
Okay, thank you, anything else?
Good question.
Yeah.
How's our ambulance building and whatever's taking place there, I haven't heard anything.
Well, it's in your packet.
It's in your packet, I think they're.
The demolition of the building is complete, electric, HVAC, steel siding, plumbing internet, security cameras, no, this is fine, it's good for the public to hear this too. Um, security cameras have all started in different phases, their installs, installation of the fire suppression system will begin last week of July, and then drywall will start going up. up, work is on schedule currently, and we are still looking at it, a November finish date for construction currently.
I just wanna say Julie and her crew have done great handling that mess out there, they've just done great working through that, and just when you think things are getting under control and satisfied, then you're going through a snake holler and you hit a cow. How does that even happen? You know, you hit a cow in Snake Holler.
There's something down there, I've seen it's more, I've had a cow, I don't.
Just a couple days ago.
I guess it wasn't.
They had no patient, no, no patient on board, and, uh, the crew was hurt, but the, the ambulance was tripped, or something. I know, I know who owned the cow, it was not a frat cow, we checked, we were hoping to go.
Yeah, you're hoping, probably got a whole new ambulance to save that cow. Yeah, I paid for it, my insurance company paid for her car one time, exactly.
Oh, that happened.
Yeah, it happened, the lady hit, hit it about dusk one night, calf ran right out in front of her and.
At least, the towman can imagine.
Thankfully she wasn't hurt, 'cause it totaled her car, that was the.
Well, yours.
Bought her a car. I had to switch insurance companies the next year, though, they were, they were not, they were not with me, I was, I had one claim, and one claim over.
I don't like to lose money.
Well, that happened. Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Great.